I will pull out what I have.
Right.
We're going. We're going.
Okay, thank you. Let me call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, April 26th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. We'll call a meeting to order. And the only thing on the agenda is Zero Summer Street Limited Dividend Affiliate of WP East Acquisitions LLC and their comprehensive permit under Mass General Law's Chapter 40D. I'm going to defer to you at this point, Amy.
Sure, so thank you. So Amy Questle, Town Council. So as you know, um, grabbing my glasses, as you know, um, the applicant, limited dividend affiliate of WP East Acquisitions LLC, appealed our decision, um, which, in our decision, we had approved the project, uh, the project called for two buildings, we approved the project, but we conditioned it that they could only have one building, um, and we had a bunch of other conditions, things like that. They appealed it to the Housing Appeals Committee. We stayed the litigation at the Housing Appeals Committee, and then we, um, they presented us with a conceptual plan of one building with parking where the other building was. We had, um, originally requested that open space be where the parking is. Unfortunately, we now understand due to engineering reasons that couldn't have been done, but, so they came back to us with a conceptual plan. We met an executive session. The board was open to looking into the conceptual plan. We had, we then had Sean Riordan from Tetra Tech review. We then told them that we were interested in investigating the conceptual plan, so they came up, they then went and did drawing, did plans. And so then we sent those to Sean Riordan from Tetra Tech. He had comments on those. Those comments were then sent to their, um, Sean then met with us, discussed his comments in executive session because we were still in litigation, we are still in litigation. He then, um, sent, we sent those to the engineer for, or sent them to the other side. Those comments have now been addressed, and, um, this board decided that they were not going to approve any, um, any revised decision without doing it in an open meeting, which is why we're here tonight. So we're here tonight for a few things. The ultimate decision, the ultimate reason tonight is to approve a revised decision based on the revised plan. We do still need input from the fire department. They were given the revised plan, so we just want to hear from them. And, um, we do have a few items that we're
Still.
Still kind of working on with the applicant. So we want to, I needed to get your input on, and I'm going back and forth with them on. And then I think that, um, Mr. Chair wanted to, um, open it up to the abutters to see if they had any comments.
Great. So why don't we start with the fire department then and see? You've had a chance, Chief, to review it all?
Good evening, thank you, John Ollinger, Fire Chief. Just upfront, the two members, my two fire prevention officers, are the ones that spent all the time on this, and right now they're tied up in a major incident, and I can't release them, so, but I can still speak on this. I am familiar with this enough after talking with them. You know, they studied in depth with the code, I did not, I would have deferred to them. Basically, the fire department really has no major concerns with how this is right now. There's been a lot of back and forth between where this project began many times before, even prior to this. It's down to one building. Again, just to confirm, but I believe both, two elevators will be in this, that was one of our main concerns on that for obvious reasons. It does have two elevators. One building actually can be easier than two, although this is a higher story, that's kind of still a better trade-off to have just one building, one sprinkler system, no immediate, exposure should one building get going, you know, it's just firefighting standpoint is easier to do. There's more ample parking for maneuvering around. Everything still has to be built to code, fire and building code. The one major concern that we have on this is the, there's a proposed bicycle storage in a portion of this building, and because of the technology changes, we just want to make sure, go on record on this as if that any lithium battery bicycles are stored, that's going to require either additional building or fire protection. Probably it's going to just be more sheet rock or more sprinkle heads. These are not big cost items, however, because of the technology with some of these bicycles, with these battery fires, we want to make sure that that building's protected. I think it's just one bike storage area, if I recall. We just want to go on record on that, just to, you know, that since this whole thing began with the advent of these lithium battery fires, that that's a concern that we want to address with this right off the top. Beyond that, again, everything has to be satisfied with the apparatus turning radiuses, which I believe we've seen on this, if not, that would be a requirement anyway. Obviously, as this, assuming this gets built, it will be done under our, you know, in conjunction with the fire inspections and, you know, code verification, fire, building, and other codes. But beyond that, where we don't really have anything that we can say we'd hold this project up.
Any questions from members of the chief?
We, we have spoken before we had our vote between the flat roof and the peak roof, and I don't want to rehash it again, but we are going to go with the level roof on this. And, and you had mentioned the adventation of a peak roof versus a low roof. Is there anything here at all we need to be concerned with on the flat roof side that would prevent this from going forward?
I don't think that the code would, the code's not strong enough to require a peak roof. I think the flat roof code is fine. In the future, we just hope it holds up.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we can either start going through the decision or?
Why don't we see if there's anybody in the, is anybody in the public that has any questions or comments? Okay. Sir? Yep. Name and address, please.
John Ollinger, 84 Progress Street, thank you. I'd like to commend you guys for all the work that you tried to work with these developers. I know they said these things. My problem is, um, in meetings dated, they promised that on Progress Street, we would not, our view would not be destructive with this building. Uh, I really don't know how that's possible because I can see the other side of the street and the train tracks from my backyard, and my neighbors can too. I didn't know if there's anything that we can do. I know the 40B, those projects, are we still in litigation with them to get this done, or is it just a parking lot? And, um, I didn't know if there's any other recourse that we could take as far as like, you know, with the congestion, everything to possibly even buy the land for ourselves. I just don't see this as being a good thing for Abington, the town, or the government, anyone.
Well, we issued a permit for the project, and they've pretty much come along to where we were in issuing the permit. There, we, we went to the one building, the five stories. So there are some small things that we're still trying to iron out, but we are still in.
What are they exactly, are they, um, um, you know, protesting or like going against?
Well, when we get to, we're going to go through the decision, so.
Yes, so if I may, Mr. Chairman, so there is still, we are still requiring screening, even though there's no building, um, right there, even though building B is gone, we are still requiring screening and the eight-foot fence. So there still will be, um, screening from, from your houses, we hope. We are still requiring that.
Do we know how far from the property line on Progress Street where the fence is?
The fence is on their property, and the screening is along, is the easement.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Natural vegetative screening.
Wayne, did you?
Wayne Smith, Senator Abbott Wootie Trust, 120 Summit Road, my address, Abington. I'm very much concerned. I, I went to the building department, and, and Mr. Mullen was very gracious and gave me a lot of time. There are a set of plans, as you know, it's all on a computer, and I, I saw that, that picture with Mr. Mullen, and obviously, it says on the plan, I can't really read it from here, but I think it said that the buffer zone would remain, which you know, as a board and council knows, that's not necessarily the case if we decide to put a road in there because we have an easement over it, and all those trees might be removed, which is a problem for me in the fact that if at later date we decide to do that, all these people that are on Progress Street that believe they weren't going to see the building, which I'll get into a little more later, they're going to see it without that buffer zone. Those trees will be removed. In addition to that, with the change of the grade that they're making in there, many of those trees will die. I can, I can affirm that to you. The other thing is, the size of the trees that are there now will buffer to a great degree. This is a five-story building, and even with those trees there, these people on Progress Street will see that building. Just because it's a parking lot in between, it's a flat area, that is not going to change the sightline for them from where they live. There were some other things that I brought up earlier in, in the hearings. One thing was that I don't believe that there should be a throughway through the T parking lot out to 123. We have a problem there now in the fact that people know it's a shortcut, they don't, they can miss the lights up at 58, and they go tearing through on our property, between our property buildings. And more than once, someone has come around that corner, and I, I just about made it to the other side. So that is a problem for us, and I would appreciate the fact that it's, there's a sign at least that says not a throughway. At least the people that will obey lines, obey signs won't go through. But I am very much concerned about the right-of-way. As you all know, it was offered to them, they agreed on a price so that they could control it. As far as we're concerned, we're not going to do anything there, but at some point, we will be, we will sell the property, and it's going to affect the price that we get on the property, I am sure, and I don't think that's right. And the people on Progress Street should know that those trees may not remain.
Okay.
You have any questions? I'd be glad to ask.
Any questions from anybody? Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Ryan Crowden, 458 Summer Street, just have a question. Once this is approved through the zoning board, does that, does this still have to go to conservation, or have all of the issues around wetlands and species and animals and drainage and all those things been completely addressed in your negotiations?
So I don't know if they ever, did they, I don't know if they ever went to conservation, but they have to go to
They have to, yeah.
The Conservation Commission under the State Wetlands Protection Act.
Right, so they did send something to the conservation, but as far as I know, they have never appeared in front of them.
So I, I think they might have gone, I think they might have done an RDA, I think they might have delineated the wetlands.
Right, they did that part of it.
So they do need to file a notice of intent with them.
And then if there are issues in terms of the drainage and the way they've set it up, then it's the conservation issue at that point.
Anything that has to do with the State Wetlands Protection Act, yes.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Yep, Chief.
I'm speaking as a private resident, not Fire Chief John Ollinger, 84 Constitution Ave. Just a question to follow up with her, with the other boards. I'm curious, did the water department approve this?
That's something, that's something when it speaks vote after.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, yeah, thanks. Anybody else at this point? Okay. Why don't we turn it back to us and go through the decision?
Okay, so, that's actually pretty much the first, the first issue. So, um, what I did was I took the, um, the decision, um, they had made, so their first council had made changes, but he, he was not the council that had sat through the hearings, so he had deleted a lot of conditions that they had agreed to in the hearings. So I had to go back and put those all back in. So I did. So, so even though there's a lot of red line in here, a lot of the stuff is stuff that I had just put back in, I think.
That was in there originally.
Right, it was in there originally. So they're really not things that I, I added, they were things that were already in there. So really, um, so the first issue really starts on page five going into page six, or I might have a different version than you guys, but it's, um, on number six, water sewer. And, um, it says that the applicant is utilizing municipal water and sewer for the project. So, um, I had added, because of, I went back through my notes, um, and I know that this, the board had mentioned this when we were talking about the original decision. I added therefore, for both water and sewer, the board will require that the applicant provide documentation in the form of a technical stamped memorandum clearly identifying projected demands, describing current system capacity permitted and practical, and assessing potential impacts to abutters or other users so that the building department can determine that the additional water demand from the project will not present a risk to public safety by either stressing available supply or impacting operating pressures. So the applicant had, is proposing to delete, um, everything after my first sentence, um, which state, my first sentence states, the applicant is utilizing municipal water and sewer for the project. So they want to delete everything after that. The applicant, um, can provide documentation of the projected demands of the project, but cannot be responsible for, for, or subject to a system-wide analysis. All local boards and officials had the ability to weigh, to weigh in, to weigh in the project during the year-long permitting process. We view this as an impermissible after-the-fact delegation of authority, and the applicant will not be able to dismiss its appeal with this kind of thing open with potentially huge implication of both practicality and cost. However, after we, after I spoke with council today, and then she sent that, I received, from, from Bill, um,
We have a coffee hearing.
Great, so you guys got the copy of the water, um, the water department, um, the water department had sent, um,
I can read it if you want.
Yes, yeah, from Kristin.
If this developer is interested in water from Abington Rockland Joint Water Works, they will need to come before the board for approval for water. At the moment, the board has issued a partial moratorium and is only approving single-family homes and renovations. This project has not been approved for water at this time. Thanks, Crystal Cameron, Superintendent.
So, um, so I guess, so that actually pretty much solves our problem because, um, all we have, I, I think we are, we can, um, we can state that the applicant intends to utilize municipal water and sewer for the project.
And then it's up, then it's up to the water department to determine whether or not there's enough there.
Yep.
So they just accidentally forgot to put that in there? Is that what you're trying to say?
No.
Or they just?
Is there an assumption that I'm making that the applicant, over the last year, had no intention of going in front of the, the Water and Sewer Commission requesting use of the water?
So, um, we, in our waivers, if we go to the very
End.
End. They have asked that, request a waiver to the extent the project is not otherwise grandfathered from the requirements of the water balance program? That's it, that's the only waiver they asked for, so.
So, so based on this note from Crystal, is there something we can put in there just saying that they're obligated to go to the water department for approval? Because she says they have to do that, is that something?
Yeah, I mean, they have to, I don't, we can't.
Can we put that in?
Sure.
We can't, we can't say this.
Yeah, we can't make a decision, but at least it will be one of our conditions that they have to go.
Okay, um, the applicant intends to utilize water and sewer for the project. The board, um, has not, um, the board has not reviewed or approved, um, water allocation.
Or sewer.
Water or sewer allocation.
One question for you is, you know, the, the 40B projects are a state mandated thing.
Yes.
And the water allocation for each city is also state allocated. What happens when they?
Collide.
Collide. This is, this is our problem, we can't.
It's a very good question.
Yeah.
And so, um, up until now, um, nothing, but, um, it, they, they fall in line like everyone else. However, um, considering the state of the Commonwealth right now, um, I'm assuming that they will be jumping ahead of other projects.
Okay.
But as of right now, they, they would fall, they fall in line like everyone else, whether it be, um, you know, first come, first served, or sometimes some towns will do their, um, their allocation as they group it with, you know, a single, if they have a moratorium, they'll do single-family houses first come, first served, they'll do multifamily first come, first served.
Condos.
Condos first served, yeah. Or they'll do first come, first served based on out, based on your, on the capacity requested, but, um.
What I'm curious about is whether the land court could, um, tell us that our commission has no authority over this, and that, you know, that, that the water and sewer, you know, allocation we have doesn't matter to them, and they can just order us to do this project anyway, regardless of that water? Because it seems like, you know.
Well, the, the, um, no, there's clear, there's clear, um, Housing Appeals Committee case law that this board has, um, has, can waive any kind of, can waive any regulation of the Abington joint work, joint water, Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works.
But we haven't.
They didn't request any wa, well, they requested the waiver that you granted, the one about the balance program, that was it.
The balance program is what again? Could you?
The balance, I'm not even quite sure.
What does that mean?
But, but they, but when it comes to a capacity issue, that is, that's usually a state mandated.
It's a state.
Yeah, and we, you can't waive state regulation.
Right.
So.
So what they're requesting is something that we can't grant them anyway?
Correct.
Okay. Just to make sure I was clear on that.
Uh, the water balance program became effective, um, March 30, March 31st, 2022. I think that is the, that is the moratorium, I think, because, um, that would be, because they're saying that they were, they were actually not, they don't even, um, it doesn't even apply to them because they were, their application was in before then. I think that's probably what it is.
But if, if they applied before the moratorium came in, and we don't have water and sewer to delve out?
That's the state, they can, then you can't waive it. Right, that's a capacity issue.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
So the, the DEP, um, the DEP regulates the capacity.
Yep.
And they, you have to apply to the DEP to increase your capacity, both on the water and the sewer side.
The town does.
Yes, or the Abington joint, the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works.
But they can't be forced to by land court to, to get more water and sewer, they can't make us pay for more water and sewer if we don't have it.
No, 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 and they can't force DEP to give you more capacity. I mean, you have to, your, your system has to be able to handle the capacity.
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
It's more water than, it's more water than it is, it's source.
I'm just trying to clarify my own mindset, what you wrote and what you read. We, we read this highlighted in blue for us, additional paragraph, you know, what you wrote on line one. And then if I understood her argument, the lawyer from the applicant
Yep.
Stated that they had not sought or had not been granted water and sewer rights for this project yet, but felt that they didn't need to have it, based on her statement, because of the application and the previous granted approval. I still think that they have to get water and sewer approval for any project in the town of Abington, regardless of what the zoning board does, to the best of my knowledge.
Water is usually not granted until the permit application comes in.
Right.
You know, like, whether it's you're doing a new single-family home or a condo, that's part of the sign-off on a building permit approval. You know, it's like, do you have all your ducks in a row? Then Conservation looks at it, zoning looks at it, water looks at it, fire look at it. Until all those get checked off, you do not get the permit to build. So generally, Crystal's approval of water comes following once the building permit is actually applied for.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the Fire Chief wants to speak.
Yes.
Yep. At this time, William speaking as my title is chief, not a resident. One of the, um, issues that Attorney Cusell brought up that piqued my interest on this is, it sounds like they stated that all of the boards had seen this, and nobody had questioned this, so it's a moot point. That's me paraphrasing, but I think that's what you meant.
Yeah.
I want to go on rec, I know I went on record many times questioning the fire flow of this structure.
Right.
Now that's, now you get fire flow, which is the amount of water theoretically, we would need to put a fire out with a, a structure of this magnitude versus a capacity, which is how much water that the Abington-Rockland Water Works can produce in a day to be used by everybody. It's two different things, they're very related, but it's two separate things. I want to make sure that we have the infrastructure, the size diameter, water mains around this building, that will give me the fire flow, which is a theoretical massive amount of water, which we hope we never need, but if we do, we would need that. Because I know we had a fire on Progress Street about eight years ago, a single-family home, and we had trouble getting water to that. Now Progress Street is probably a much smaller main, and I do not know what the mains are around here or if they add to it. They may already have the flow, to be honest with you, I don't know that answer. But I do want to go on record for them that I know I asked that question before, so that question before any moratorium, make sure that we have the infrastructure to supply the fire flow needed for this project. So if they're trying to get around that, they didn't, because I know I asked that question at one point.
Yes, you definitely did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. In, in this language, was this your language that they took out, or was this, or was this Sean's language?
Um, I think it was, I think it was both of ours.
Yeah.
It was from the, it was from the meetings.
Yeah, because Sean was proposing this all the way through too.
Right.
It's not something, for her to say this is something that hadn't been discussed.
Oh, no, it definitely had. It definitely had.
Yes.
So, one other question related to this is, so they're saying that they don't have to deal with the moratorium because they submitted a proposal before the moratorium was put in place, but the passage of time matters, right?
But I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure if that's what they're saying.
Okay. I was confused on that.
Yeah. So, do you want me to find out from her? What she's, I can call her.
I'm curious, you know, it's such a big issue, I think we should get clarification on that.
No, she said she's available.
Yeah.
Phone a friend.
I will. I'm not afraid to do that.
I know, I know.
Would you leave this language, highlighted blue language, that was added, that was there, that was removed?
I don't know, that's, I rely on consultants.
Okay. Hi, Debbie, it's Amy.
Hi.
Hi, you're on speaker with the board.
Hello, board.
Hello.
So, um, we are, and the Fire Chief is here too, and the public is here. We are discussing the water, um, and we had a few questions. We, um, we received an email today from, um, was it today? Or did we get that before?
It was the last couple days.
Yeah.
It stated April 19th.
April 19th. We received an email from, um, the water department stating that the project has never been before the water department.
Okay.
Is that, do, do you know if that's the case?
I do not know if that's the case.
Okay, because we were under the impression that the water department had taken a look at this project.
I do not know if it's the case that anybody went before the water board. I do know that like with every other board in town, they have that, they had a year's worth of a hearing process to comment and get their comments into the zoning board, if nothing else.
So, do, is, so, is the applicant under the impression that when it applies for the building permit, it does not have to go before the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works to get the water permit?
What we asked for is a waiver of the, of the Abington portion of that approval, which I think the board had granted.
Well, you, um, no, the waiver was only for the, was only for the balance program, which is, which they just started in, which is the moratorium portion? The Abington Water The Abington Water Balance Program Application and Fee Schedule and Rules for Service, which were effective March thirty first? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think you're right. Sorry, I'm just looking at that.
So, so it was my.
The engineers issue.
Yes, yeah, I know, sorry. So it was my understanding that since that was the only waiver requested, that you were still, you were going to go before the water department to get.
We do have to go before the Abington-Rockland Water Commission to get your standard connection permit, just like.
Okay.
It's like, like you would get a building permit, you would get a water connection permit.
Okay, that's what we thought. That's what I thought. Okay, good. Okay. Okay. And that would be the same for the sewer because of, because the same thing with sewer. There was no waiver for that either. Okay. And then, um.
Chief had that concern.
Oh, and then, well, the other, the other concern was the, um, was whether the infrastructure around the development could handle the fire flow. But I think Sean had looked at that because that, the chief had brought that up previously. Do you recall that, Debbie, at all? I would have to go back through my notes.
Yeah, I don't have that handy. It sounds familiar. I know that, that, that the issue definitely came up, as did turning radius and snow removal, of course.
Yeah. Right. Okay. I'll, I'll have to check on that one, but I, I will check on that with, with Sean to make sure. Okay, and then anything else?
What about the letter itself we got?
Right, that, that's confirming that they haven't been before the water department.
And they have to go.
And they have to go before the water department.
That is a shortage.
What's that?
And that is a shortage?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they might be exempt from that.
Okay.
Because they have, their application was in beforehand.
But they still have to get approval by the Water and Sewer Commission?
Yes, they have to get the connection permit. And then, okay, so that, we're still on that. We're still on the first one, so we might call you back. Is that okay? Okay, thanks, Debbie. Okay.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay.
You can, but let's get through this first.
Okay.
Okay.
I have March thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Yeah, I see that too, yeah.
I'm reading the minutes.
Water Balance Program Application and Fee Schedule for Rules and Rules for Service, effective March thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Maybe there's a subsequent one.
Yeah.
Might be. That's when that may have gone, but the town may have opposed those moratoriums.
Yeah. Because, because that would be what they, we put in what they asked for. So if it's.
Which was the May?
Which was March thirty first, twenty twenty two.
March thirty first, twenty two.
Yeah.
Bottom line is they have to get the approval of the water department.
Right. I mean, yeah, it is what it is. If there's no water, then they have to do it.
If there's no water, then they can't.
So, to go back to my second conversation, the comment that had been written out that you wrote back in that they now want removed after the first sentence, and find it offensive, we leave it in. We could still leave it in, though.
We don't have to leave it in, though, because they haven't been before water yet.
Is there something in our decision pending, pending the additional review by the Water and Sewer Commission for approval of water and sewer usage?
They have to get a connection permit.
So they have to deal with the water.
That's, that's, that's the standard operating procedure. You don't have to worry about putting it in our.
We're going to put that in. So what we're going to say now is that the applicant intends to utilize municipal water and sewer for the project and will be, and will be required, will be required.
To appear before.
To obtain. Connection permits. Obtain connection permits.
So it was a good thing that we granted it and let the water department deal with.
The water department.
So, um, the connection permits are from the, um, Abington-Rockland, and then the sewer permits from the Department of Public Works, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and then we can let them delete their language and make them feel like they're great.
Oh, to sewer.
Okay, um, so.
Just, just, there's a comment Bill just pointed out. John Stone also commented that, he's a DPW director. Thank you very much, Bill. Typically, projects that plan on connecting to the municipal sewer system require approval from the Board of Sewer Commission, so they'll have to go in front of that.
So that's going to be in there too?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, um, so, um, this is, um, so I, I received additional comments from, from Debbie, who we just spoke with, their attorney, at like five minutes to six tonight, so that's why, that's why I was a little bit late, and there's also a detour, so.
Right, there's a train accident.
Okay, so, well, there was a detour at the police station.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not my fault.
We didn't say that. We didn't say nothing.
We're not blaming you any, don't worry.
I know they were here.
She loves pointing to me. I'm a troublemaker.
He was blaming me.
Fifty minutes, you're late.
I know. It's like, hey, see? Nobody told me. No one told me. No one told me. No one told me.
The bridge is out.
Um, okay, so, um, one of the things is that I put this in every decision and it's on page seven. It's condition number three. The very end, it says, "Any fee associated with the rental units shall also be proportional and reduced for the affordable units." And then she added, "To the extent required by the subsidizing agency," or I put that in, or I don't know if I put that in or she put that in, but then she said, "This could be another economic issue for the applicant." I, I, I've put that in every decision for the past, I don't know, ten years.
Isn't there fundamental obligation to be affordable for those units?
Thank you, thank you. So, um, I'm okay with adding, "To the extent required by the subsidizing agency." I'm okay with that, but. I, I think that that, you're right. It, it, that's why we do it. Okay. And then, um, and then this, um, okay, that's fine. The rest of these changes that you see in red, those are the ones that I mostly put in. I did, um, I did change a lot. Um, there was building inspector, there were building commissioners, so I changed a lot of them, just the building department. Cleaned it all up.
Yeah.
And then with the regulatory agreement, I put, um, I put all of, um, our standard language in there and I took out the stuff that they put in. They, they agreed with me finally on all that.
Amy, on page eleven, before you hit me, Paula. We have a strikeout on sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Is that your strikeout or their strikeout? Under housing?
It's my strikeout because I put in, I, I put in my own lang, I put in different language.
Thank you.
Yep. It's a, that, that was all duplicate, duplicative because of what I put in.
Thank you.
Yep. And then, um, again, on page fourteen, E and F are going to change based on what we just discussed with water and sewer, that they're going to be obligated to get connection fees. And then, um, on page fifteen, um, we have, um, just want to see what it is now. I had submit a copy of the approved stormwater management permit from the planning board. So they, um, so they applied for their comprehensive permit and then after they applied, the town enacted the stormwater bylaw where the planning board issues a stormwater permit and, um, and we issued, I think we might have even issued our first comprehensive permit prior to, um, prior to the Attorney General approving the stormwater, um, the stormwater bylaw. And so, um, they appealed it and then the Attorney General approved the stormwater bylaw. So the stormwater bylaw is now in effect. They're now subject to it because it is a general bylaw. It's not a zoning bylaw, so they are not grandfathered. And so.
Do they know that?
Well, they know it now. So, um, I informed them. I, I tried to tell them and they didn't listen, but then I finally just came out and told them flat out that they're subject, subject to it. So anyway, um, on my way over here, I received an email, so I received in writing a request for, um, so, um, I just received another email from their attorney that said, "I just want to make sure I was clear. We do need connection permits as part of our building permit package, but nothing discretionary about capacity," which is fine, because we're not, we don't discuss, we're not in charge of capacity, so that's fine. And then she wrote, she has another email, "The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement to obtain a stormwater management permit from the planning board." And so we'll, we can discuss that when we discuss our, the waivers, and that's fine because Sean did review this with regard to the new stormwater bylaw. I checked with Sean.
So that's.
So it's fine. It does, it does meet all the standards. Basically also because the stormwater management, the stormwater bylaw, the Abington Stormwater Bylaw pretty much tracks the DEP stormwater bylaw.
If the applicant, if the applicant's stormwater management plan would meet the requirements, why would they want it waived?
Because they don't have.
But our person has said that everything they have in their document would meet the standard.
Mm-hmm, so they don't have to go to the planning board. It's just so they don't have to get that, that planning board, they don't have to get the permit in hand.
And, and, and is that a, because our person looking for, for our interest states that that's okay because everything they are doing will meet the standard, does it mean we shouldn't still make them go in front of the planning board and get what they need to do?
Yes, because this is a comprehensive permit, so it's all permits wrapped into one. So by making them now go to the planning board to get, to get a permit that they don't really need because we've already determined that they meet the standards, we're opening them up to an appeal that's unnecessary. So it would be, it would really be arbitrary and capricious at that, because we already have.
We already have.
That sort of stuff.
From our peer view.
Did I get that right? That was arbitrary and capricious.
He did a very good job, obviously.
Doing my best.
So, so we can, so we can deal with that, um, and then.
So you're going to strike that, then?
Yep, that's going to, we're going to strike that because we're going to get the.
Approval already.
The approval. Okay, so we're going to get the waiver. So, um, parking. And I told them not to touch this one, but they're insisting on touching it. Um, so, okay. Parking, we have parking shall be regulated by stickers issued to residents. They want to add, or some other method, to ensure only residents park in non-visitor parking spaces onsite. So they said applicant, applicant agrees and has committed to restricting parking onsite to residents only except for designated visitor parking space, or only, and then except for designated visitor parking spaces. But it may do so by some other method. For instance, it might provide tags for license plates or placards, and it will keep a list of residents' license plates for onsite management to be able to enforce.
So that's in there?
That's what they're saying. They're saying that they want to do it. Um, we had parking shall be regulated by stickers issued to residents, period. They want to add, or some other method to ensure only residents park in non-visitor parking spaces onsite.
Is there any way for us to ensure their compliance with that? Because stickers are fairly, you can see them. But I guess that, as long as they do that, I guess it doesn't.
What, and what methods were they saying?
Placards or tags on license plates, but I think that's illegal.
It probably is, yeah.
I don't think you could put things on license plates.
It sounds illegal.
Yeah, I feel like the registry.
Can't you just add that in there, such as placards or stickers?
These people are interesting, aren't they?
I mean, stickers are already here, so.
Fighting over little things.
This, this, this came up with the discussion of the parking lot, the MTA parking lot, and all that. It's like, wow.
I told them not to touch it. I told them not to touch it.
It's not a heated subject matter. It's just, it's just natural defending of what we know is going to happen in the first.
Right, because no one's going, they don't want to pay for a parking.
Why don't we say stickers or placards?
Or placards, exactly.
Okay.
That's it, period.
Language.
And then we.
That's their language, right?
And then we win. We win. Okay, stickers or placards?
We win. We don't win.
Okay.
How do we win?
We don't, we never win. Okay. And then, in the next one, rental agreements, blah, blah, blah. They wanted, they were objecting to oversized vehicles. So I had to go online and find a definition of oversized vehicles, which was much harder than you would expect. So I found, so then I wrote in perens, I wrote, "For example, a vehicle with a gross weight of ten thousand and one pounds or more."
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody? Okay. I got that from the registry. Okay.
Would another one be, or wider than eight feet?
Sure, sure.
I know where this is going to go. This is one of the. Just a suggestion, or if you add something, any, any vehicles that inhibit access of emergency vehicle response.
There you go.
Or emergency vehicle access, because I'm envisioning these massive pickup trucks with the big ball hitch, and we're not going to get any ambulance passed it. So if you fit something common sense in there, there's just generally anything that could inhibit emergency vehicle access, let me do it.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Covers the waterfront pretty well. I like the way you wrote it.
Yes, I do too.
Emergency. Emergency access vehicles, you think?
Emergency vehicle access.
Emergency vehicle access, got it, okay. Okay.
Right, right.
Right. Okay.
We're giving you a plastic cup, just in case.
We just ripped the ends out of it.
Okay, and then, um, so we have, um, the next one, they struck out the whole paragraph about the fire department plan, but now that, so what I'll do is tomorrow, I'll just get, perhaps from, um, from, I'll just get from the, from you guys confirmation that the plans have been approved, the turning radius plans have been approved by you guys.
Yeah, I can make sure that's the most recent one of this.
Right, but yeah, that should be part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is one that's in that link that, that we, that was sent to us.
This is up, this is the link that I did forward you down this week.
We didn't turn it over yet, sir?
I think it has one. Yeah, it has that on it. And Sean also looked at it too and said that it was fine, so we'll just get confirmation from you guys and then we can just rewrite this paragraph that says that the fire department has approved it.
Confirmed, yeah.
And then, um. Okay, and then. Okay, we are going, so this, um, five hundred and twenty-eight required spaces, I'm, that's in green and I'm not sure why, but that seems like a high number. I got to figure out how many parking spaces are there. I'll figure that out.
That was closer to three hundred.
I, I think so.
I thought it was three hundred and eight.
I think that's wrong, yeah. So five.
What pages is that?
It's on page twenty-nine of mine.
I thought it was three hundred and eight parking spaces.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Okay, so waivers, we're going to add. We're going to add the waiver, we're going to add the general, from the general bylaws, we're going to add the stormwater. Okay. And then, um, so waivers that you have not seen are signs, so, um, they said that, um, the waiver says article on page thirty-one, it says, "Granted as shown on revised plans." I couldn't find signs on the revised plans. I didn't know if anybody else could.
I don't recall seeing them.
Right.
No.
Okay.
I don't recall seeing any sign.
Amy, there's a little bit on this, like if you see here, they have indications of one-way sign.
But this, but when, when you.
ADA sign here.
Aren't they required to?
But when you go.
You're talking about an entrance sign.
I thought it was, I thought it was like the sign that says what the place is.
Yeah, I think, if you look in the, that first comment, right?
Yeah.
A waiver is requested to allow for a ground mounted sign with approximate dimensions seven by five feet, four inches.
Right.
Seven feet, yeah. I think that's like an entrance.
Right, an entrance sign. I couldn't find one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Were granted that?
No, with, this is new.
I don't remember talking about signs at all.
Right, that's why, it's brand new.
That's why it's new, that's why they're looking for a waiver for it now, yeah, but we should probably see it on the plan.
I would like to see what the proposed signs are.
Yeah, because it should be...
If you approve at all, I mean...
Should be... I mean, we do with other smaller developments.
Okay. I just thought I missed it, but we didn't.
No, no, out of all of us, we don't...
I don't remember any conversation on signs.
So, essentially, they can, they can come back for a waiver for the sign if they want to, for a modification.
That's true.
It could be a minor modification if they wanted to. So, anyway, okay, so that...
So, I had just two comments.
Yep.
Page three, number eleven, says, "The applicant currently owes four thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars in peer review fees," is that still the case?
Oh, no.
Or is that unpaid, or?
Okay, we got a, yeah.
That's the last sentence there.
Thank you.
So, that's going, so they don't owe anything?
Yep.
All right. And then, kind of back to what Mr. Smith was saying on engineering, page eight, number five, Wayne was kind of referencing this. "I don't like the language, the likelihood that Center Avenue Trust would seek to clear the easement is remote," I don't think we can say that as, as the permit issuing authority.
We can't inhibit his...
We should have anything anyway.
We can't say that.
Right.
How do we know that?
Where is that, I'm sorry?
Number, uh, number five, on page five, the third sentence.
Oh, sorry, I just saw it. I must have gone to the wrong page.
Okay, I thought I took that out.
And then I think you take nevertheless out as well, and then it would just read, "Should Center Ave. Trust seek to utilize easement in a way that diminishes the vegetative buffer, the applicant shall seek necessary approval to relocate the easement and preserve the portion of the buffer."
Okay.
Just to refresh my memory, what, what all does the, the easement allow for? I mean, he said, wrote earlier when he was discussing it, but what, what else? Pipeline and...
It's act, it's access, it's, it's utility and access.
No, I think that was right.
Yep.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Pretty much a, it's a general easement for anything, too.
Yeah. Okay. So, that's all I had.
Okay.
Anybody else have any?
No, I was mostly worried about the water and sewer stuff.
So, where do we go from here?
So, if you guys are good with this, then what I can do is I will, I will make all the final changes, you guys can make a vote to approve the revised decision based on the change, contingent on the changes, and vote to have the chairman sign it.
Question on the stormwater, stormwater management waiver?
Sure, yes.
Is that going to be added to this document?
Yes.
And we are agreement that we will grant that waiver?
The, the waiver is only that they have to get a separate stormwater management permit from the planning board.
Okay.
Because we already have in here that they comply.
Okay.
So, they're not seeking, they're not seeking a waiver for, from compliance with the bylaw, they're only seeking a waiver that they have to actually get a, a permit in hand.
Is that something we have to vote on?
It, it would be, well, it's part of the, it's part of the decision.
Of the revised decision.
Yeah, it's part of the...
Without us individually agreeing to that waiver?
As part of a revised decision, it's going to be...
So, when you vote on the revised decision, it's part of it.
It will include that waiver.
All right, that's fine. And, so if we make a motion, it would have to be as, you know...
Subject to?
Subject to the changes as discussed.
Changes as discussed, okay.
And, and you said you're going to check with Sean on the fire flow?
The flow, yeah, to make sure that the infrastructure...
Versus capacity, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and...
Flow capacity.
Yeah, and so, what would happen is if, if the, if we, if the changes are, if we can't issue this decision that you guys are going to vote on tonight, then we will have another meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And could you explain what happens if we don't issue a revised decision? Where we, where would we go?
So, if you don't issue a revised decision, the Housing Appeals Committee has retained jurisdiction over the case, and so, we would go, we would go back to the Housing Appeals Committee, they would go back with their original plan of two buildings, and we would start with litigation with them requesting, basically starting with their application that they originally started with.
So, we're starting back, or they automatically win?
Well, they always win at the HAC, but, but they, they, this is off the table.
Okay.
Yeah, so the process, that's...
All the stuff that we...
Yes, everything that we, everything that we negotiated is off, and they go back to their original design.
All right.
And then we fight, we, no, we fight, we litigate.
You can't fight, you can't fight. Can't use that word, that's not the word.
We litigate the original design.
Yeah, which you've already, you know, pretty much banged up.
Be nice if they just went away.
Okay, so we should be entertaining the motion at this point, I guess, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll move things along, but also just know that if, if anything doesn't pan out, if any of these issues don't pan out, I'll be back.
We'll be back, we'll be back. So, I'm going to, if anybody else has, before I, we take the vote, just, I'm going to open it up, just in case anybody else has any questions or comments, yes, Mr. Smith?
Wayne Smith, the only question, I, can we appeal the decision at that point?
Can...
Can we appeal the decision?
Who's we?
Uh, any, the public, appeal the decision.
Appeal the comprehensive permit decision?
I mean, I'm not sure, you'd have to, you know, you'd have to check with your counsel. Did you appeal, if you didn't appeal the original decision...
Right, because the original decision, perhaps agreed with, and we, we could have appealed it, but since it wasn't going to affect some things...
So, I don't know, I don't know, you'd, yeah, you'd have to, I mean, you could try, you can always try, I guess, is the, I guess.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Yes, Pam?
Hi, Pam Howell, one forty-nine Walnut Street, I'm just wondering how many affordable units are going to be in this?
Twenty-five percent of a hundred and ninety-eight, I think.
Is it twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent.
Okay, okay.
A hundred and ninety-eight is the number of units.
I know, it could be at least twenty and twenty-five percent.
Yeah, it's, it's right in there, twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five.
Yep.
Amy, on page eight, number eleven, following the filing of a decision after a man with the town clerk, the applicant shall record the decision with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and provide proof of said recording of the Board of Appeals. No permits shall be issued until this condition is satisfied. Is that our final approval of this plan decision?
No.
No.
No, the recording of the, the recording of the permit allows, that basically allows the building to permit, the building department to start their review and everything, yes. The building department will get building permit, they'll get a building permit application with final plans, they have sixty days...
To review.
To send those plans out to peer review and third-party review and everything.
Okay.
We built that in, so rather than the normal thirty days, and we did build in that they are allowed to get peer review money for that, too.
Just back to Pam's point, under B...
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to...
B, B housing, number seventeen, page nine, "As a condition of any approval here under, at least twenty-five percent of the dwelling units shall be and shall remain affordable," so.
I was just trying to, what is the actual number, though?
I think it's a hundred and ninety-eight, I'm pretty sure it was...
Pretty much was a hundred and ninety-eight.
So, what's that, what is, what's twenty-five percent of that?
Like, twenty-five?
I have to, like, I don't mind.
Fifty, forty-nine?
Okay, is it forty-nine?
Forty-nine, fifty, yeah.
It's a decimal point, I don't know if it's plus or minus five.
And then, but, because it's a rental, all of them will be, all of them will show up on the SHI for the, that will bring you closer to your ten percent with that.
For now.
For now, because then, next month, the twenty, twenty census is coming out, which is going to knock everybody back down, so.
Oh, okay.
I'm just a plethora of good news, all right.
I love the way you worded it.
I know, okay.
Okay, so, I guess we can entertain a motion now at this point.
I would like to make a motion on the petition of limited dividend affiliate of WP East Acquisitions LLC, ninety-one Hartwell Avenue, Lexington, Massachusetts, for a comprehensive permit under MGL Chapter forty-B regarding revised decision as previously approved by the board and as amended by a discussion and the draft that Amy Questle, Town Council, provided this evening. Now, what if we...
Let me just get a second, Rick.
Before I give a second, pending any addition or change that we agreed to, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just sorry.
Pending any...
I just want to make sure we...
The revisions.
My loose leaf is, I don't remember if I, I hear different terminology that's deciding the same thing, I want to make sure I'm covering the same thing, so.
So, before we do a second, I just asked one question.
Yep.
What if we find something tomorrow on this that we don't like and we bring it to your attention? Is it null and void?
Well, once we vote the permit, then...
Unless it's something that I'm checking on.
Yeah.
Because we basically got this today, so, I mean, like, when we sat down, so...
Do you want to schedule another meeting?
No, I don't want to schedule another meeting, no.
It is up to you, if you, if you don't...
I can come back, I don't care.
I don't mind coming back if we have to.
I am, I can check out my calendar.
I mean, is anyone, does anyone else on the board, does anyone else on the board have the same opinion, or?
No, I read, I read through it and...
I, I did not read through, I was working, I was operating a hospital all day, so I did not get a chance to...
Well, what I'm saying is, I mean, we, you kind of banged out a couple of things here that I didn't even notice.
If you would prefer to have Amy make the revisions that we talked about tonight and then come back next week...
I am not trying to drag this on.
May third or fourth? May third or fourth, so that's May, that's the third is Wednesday or the fourth is Thursday?
I can't do, I can't do Wednesday, but...
How about Thursday, the third, the fourth?
Fourth I can do. That's fine, then we'll have a final...
Yep, final, final, final.
Final, final, and everything will be...
I'm okay either way, I mean, I could do, I could do either one, so I'm fine.
Yeah, I hate to be the dragger, but...
No, that's fine.
Are you going to be here?
I can, I should be able to be here.
When is that?
May fourth, it's next Thursday.
Friday or Wednesday or Thursday?
Let me look my calendar.
No, I can't do it, I can't do it Wednesday.
So, Thursday, the fourth, May fourth.
May fourth, is it Thursday?
I can do any time, I can do early.
Let me just double check here for a minute, I turned my phone off, I apologize.
That's okay.
Yeah, if you want to do May fourth at six o'clock as opposed to seven, just to...
I can do any time.
It's just that...
That's rich, that's fine, I have no problem.
I didn't mean to pop that in.
Well, and then you have a final draft to look at.
And then we have a much easier motion.
Yeah.
Right. Not my...
Yeah, May, May fourth would work for me.
All right, May fourth, six o'clock, all right?
Yeah.
Anybody else, all right, May fourth at six?
I'm good for that.
I want you, so there's no motion now, you can withdraw your motion, Rick.
I am withdrawing my motion, so...
Now, you can, now you can make a motion to have us have a meeting next May fourth.
Yeah, I mean, you don't even, it's not a public hearing, so...
Well, that's true, yeah. So, we'll schedule a meeting for May fourth, just so everybody knows, May fourth, six o'clock, I'm not sure what room it'll be in, but it'll get posted, yeah.
It'll be great.